Welcome to the Wednesday, January 13th, Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School, School Committee Meeting. Please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment, is there anybody that would like to make a comment? Moving on.
Mr. Chairman.
Approval minutes, yes, Mr. Tucker.
I move the approval of the December 9th minutes of the regular school committee meeting.
Second. Treasury's report.
I have to abstain on the, should be a roll call vote on that, I have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay.
Do we have a vote?
Vote. All in favor? Aye. Stay. Treasury's report.
Does any questions?
No.
Our second term is motion to accept.
All in favor? Aye. All business, District Governance Program. Joanna, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, just briefly, this came from, Mike from MASC. This has to do with a presentation that Elena and I went to, and this gives a little bit more explanation about it, but I'm still waiting to get what is the final piece to this, which is a handbook that you create at the end. If I can get that, I'm trying to, I called and I have an email out to a woman named Dorothy Presser, who is an MASC officer, and she hopefully will get back to me and maybe give me a sample handbook, so I can show you what this is about, at least the end result of it. I'm not sure that we need to do many of these that are listed here, they're trainings that I think that we don't necessarily need, but what I thought we needed was the handbook, which is sort of the final piece to it. So I will report on that at the next meeting, okay?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks, Joanna. Moving on, notifying school committee members of incidents at the school. Marie?
This was brought up at our last meeting. We, you know, occasionally have incidents here at the school which require police or ambulance, or various reasons, I mean, it is a high school with teenagers, so things do come up. The protocol has been, in the past, that I call the chair, and I call the vice chair, and let them know. There would be other circumstances where I think are more serious, or if the media was involved, that I would make sure that all of the committee members, I made that phone call. And that's, you know, that's been the procedure that we've followed in the past. Are there any questions about that, or any concerns about that, that protocol or procedure?
Well, one, in my number of years on the board, I've never had any trouble with the superintendents making a judgment call on when, who needs to be notified and when. In all the years I've been here, maybe I've been called two or three times, you know, school bus incident, or something like that. But I'm perfectly happy to leave it to your judgment call.
Okay, thank you.
And the chairman here. Anybody else? I feel the same way as Mr. Tucker, I think it's been going well over the years, and I don't see any need to change it right now. Mr. Early.
I'd change if it's not broke.
Yep.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, just briefly, I think obviously if it rises to a certain level, and we're gonna hear it on the news or something, I think we need to be informed of it, but other than that, I think everything's fine, no problems at all.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on. Reports and communications, student representative, Ms. Fox.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all of our school committee members. The girls' basketball team is off to a great start this season with a record of four wins and two losses. They're having an impressive start and are currently in first place in their league. They've been working hard and continuing to improve as the season continues. The boys' basketball team continues to play well and work hard to improve this season. The team currently has a record of two wins and three losses, playing some tough, non-league opponents. The team has had some great come-from-behind wins versus Greater Lawrence last Friday night. The wrestling team continues to put in hard work during practice and are preparing for their competitions. They hold a record of 10 wins and two losses, just completing their ninth win in a row. They hope to continue their streak against Greater Lawrence this evening. The boys' hockey team has been working hard all season as well. They have a total of 39 players in the hockey program with Amesbury. There are 23 Whittier and 16 Amesbury players on both of the junior varsity and varsity teams. They continue to improve each week, training hard and coming together as a team. The cheerleading team is practicing daily for competitions and have been doing a great job cheering on the basketball teams on their home games. The interact club hosted a holiday special on December 17th at Bethany Holmes Senior Assisted Living Facility in Haverhill. They did an excellent job representing Whittier Tech and were very well received. They served coffee and holiday cookies and performed an impromptu sing-along with the residents. Everyone enjoyed their time. The yearbook club continues their effort into making a well, into a thorough and carefully planned yearbook for the class of 2016. They have raised money by taking senior portraits and will continue to compile and plan the final draft. The multicultural club wants to thank the Whittier community for the generous donations made to the Coats for Kids Coat Drive. Over 50 coats and jackets were delivered to Anton's, yes, Anton's cleaners through December. The club is now looking forward to a presentation on African wedding traditions that will happen later this month. The drama club is working hard at their rehearsals for the spring production of Grease. There are currently 38 students casting the performance, working either lead or ensemble roles. Other members are working in the technical side of productions. The team continues to collaborate with different technical areas, and CAD drafting and carpentry have been helping with set design and construction. The prom committee continues to plan the event with voting open for all seniors to decide the theme of this year's prom, which has been decided as Under the Stars, and they will continue to plan more aspects of the prom over the next few weeks. The robotics club has continued training and preparing for the start of a new competition season, which started earlier this month. The team has six weeks to design and build a robot to perform specific tasks. In addition, they are also scheduled to participate in competitions at Redding High School and UNH next month. And the key club has been very busy with community services past month, which included bell ringing to support the Salvation Army. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Tucker.
Well, one, I'd just like to thank Zaffron for giving up your time to come to the meetings on a school night and help us with the governance of the committee.
Thank you.
Ms. Troop.
I just had one question, when is the spring musical? Is there a date set?
I think there is a date set, I don't have it, could make, but.
Okay, I just thought, you know. I believe it's mid-March. Okay, mid-March, all right.
Thank you. Superintendent Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Tonight before you are personnel action for informational purposes. We have hires for ELL and SPED staff training, health office clerical support. We have the resignation of the confidential secretary to the director of Student Services and department head of guidance and admissions, and a Mason Ray instructor. The budget update, the executive subcommittee met earlier this evening to discuss the FY17. At that meeting, we began with an 8.68 percent increase, which will reduce for the next executive subcommittee meeting. At this time, there are nine communities with an increase in enrollment, and no additional choice students for the school year. An MCAS update, we have received the November retest results for the class of 2017. In ELA, four students took the exam, and all four students passed the exam, with two students getting into the proficient category. 100 percent of the class of 2017 has passed ELA MCAS. In math, 17 students took the exam, and eight students passed, with three getting into proficient. The other nine students who failed will take the March retest on March 3rd and 4th. So at this point, 97.4 percent of the class of 2017 has passed the math MCAS. Whittier is currently running a biology MCAS retest after school for juniors who still need to pass biology exam. The program is free of charge and runs Mondays and Thursdays. At this time, 24 juniors will be taking the biology MCAS on February 1st and 2nd. Superintendent's update, on December 11th, 2015, Dr. Robert Brooks, a well-known national and international author on child psychology, spoke to the faculty. He discussed resiliency in children and the impact we as educators have on our students. He spoke for well over two hours, and his message was well received by all of our faculty. On Tuesday, December 15th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Luncheon that was held at Whittier. It was an opportunity for members to bring their executive assistants, to thank them for all that they do. I would like to thank the Culinary Arts Department for the extraordinary luncheon they provided here at the school.
Class will be loading in five minutes, class will be loading in five minutes.
On Thursday, January 7th, I met with school committee member Dave Irving from Raleigh, along with Joan Peterson, the moderator of the town of Raleigh, and David Peterson, one of Raleigh's selectmen. At that meeting, we discussed admissions, school budget, and future needs of the district. I want to thank you for that.
I want to thank you also for your hospitality.
The tours for middle school students have been completed. We will be getting the admissions applications at the conclusion of the second term. We expect to be very busy again this school year. Also, in front of you today, in your package, was the, my SMART goals for this school year, along with an update as to where I am with the standards for the superintendent's rubric. Are there any questions, or anything I can answer for any of you at this time?
Well, how far along are you in process? Couple of months to go, or is it a one-year?
It'll be through the end of the school year. So part of this was through the mentor program that I've been a part of, and then, at the end of the school year, you'll be rating where I am and the standards and on my goals at the end of the school year.
Any further questions? Just wondering what Teach Point is?
Oh, Teach Point is the online program that we use when we're evaluating teachers. It's on our iPads, it's an app, there's an app for that. It's an app that we use when we're evaluating teachers, as well as we do their formative and summative assessments on that as well.
Oh, I heard that.
That would be new then.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Early.
I do have one quick question. On goal three, district improvement?
Yep.
I noticed on the first point, administrative communications and public relations.
Yep.
Then down here in the first benchmark, meet periodically with district superintendents and community stakeholders to discuss relevant topics concerning education. How are you on that right now?
At this point, I've met with, I believe, every superintendent in the district.
Okay.
Except for one.
All right, but do you go outside the district?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you are talking to other people outside the district?
Yes, so the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Group, as well as the North Shore Superintendent's.
Thank you. We can. I do read this.
Want to move it?
Good. I spent a lot of time on it, I'm glad you read it.
You get any work done when you're doing all these things and having to.
Acceptance.
It's crazy. It's excellent, did a good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we receive the SMART goals from the superintendent.
Is there any reason to vote on this?
I think it's just accepting.
Okay.
Receiving.
All right.
I've moved for accept.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. There's no vote, be quiet.
I vote on it.
Okay.
No, you can.
All in favor? Aye.
In front of you tonight is also the recommendation to establish an adjustment counselor here at the school. This has been a goal for this school year, and then planning for the budget for next school year. There's many reasons for the establishment of this position. I'm concerned about the social and emotional health of our students. We have an increased number of students here at the school, we have an increased number of at-needs students, and it's a position that I feel like we really need to implement sooner, rather than even waiting until next year. So I guess I'm asking that the school committee establish this position for the 2015-2016 school year.
Mr. Chairman, I move the establishment of adjustment counselor position, new to the school.
I'll second.
Still Sage. Questions?
Is this a new position, or one that we've had in the past?
It's a new position.
Have we had a similar position in the past?
We have a, we have a school psychologist, this would be working more on the mental health piece with our students, so student mental health.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
I think it's an excellent position. We have them at Haverhill High School, they're probably one of the most important positions we have up there relative to students that have emotional needs, whether it be at-home issues, drug issues, teen pregnancy, all those types of issues. The only suggestion that I would have on the qualifications is I would put my personal opinion with my experience in dealing with the position over the past 12 years, is that I would not hire somebody in their first year of service in adjustment, I think it's a very specialized position. I know we had recently just posted this position, and, because we had a retirement, and I think you would probably want somebody that would have at least, I would say probably at least five years of experience, would be my, I would not hire somebody initially that doesn't have any experience in this area, I think that would be the only mistake that you may make with the qualifications. That would be my only recommendation, would be to add a minimum component of service. I think you'll see that you'll be much better off than hiring an entry-level position. It's a very specialized position, and the individuals that serve in this position are very unique with the wide range of issues that they deal with. So I support the position, but I'd like to see it have a minimum requirement for the amount of service.
I can say, you know, how I feel about that, I agree, it's a position that we'd like to have somebody with a lot of experience. I think that through the interview process, it's a position that I feel very passionate about, and that it's something that I know that our students need, and I think we'll be able to find a really solid person for that position. The requirements for licensure for a school adjustment counselor are very significant, much more significant than for a school counselor, for instance, and they really have to do a lot of mental health work in order to get licensed for this position, so I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I know the qual, I was talking about experience relative to in that position, I think you'd be better off having an experienced individual, but that's just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Early.
I'm happy to see that we're finally at the end, and we're gonna take it to the next step. I just hope we get the most qualified, I hope there's a lot of people that do apply, and the starting salary make it attractive enough, and I believe you're gonna do the right thing, your team and you, and good luck with it, because I believe it's one of the most important positions, other than superintendent, how to put it, not as high as that, but it's up there. And good luck with it, because I believe it's a very, very important position. And I've been talking about it for many months, and I know I've talked to you about it, and I'm glad we're not just talking about it, we're getting ready to do something now. When will you be posting this?
As soon as I have approval from the school committee tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion. Move the motion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed.
Tonight, I would like.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very exciting. Tonight, I would like approval for a few field trips that are out of state. The first one is for the electronics robotics versus robotics competition, and they will be at UNH Durham on March 24th.
Who to approve?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Mr. Early, do you have a question?
Yes. We have the paperwork.
Yes.
Very important.
I know.
Wanted to slip through the.
Don't forget.
Thank you.
Also, another field trip on, at March 25th, at UNH, for the first robotics competition. I need approval from the school committee.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Do we have the right paperwork?
Yes. How am I gonna fit this in? On March 26th, there's another field trip by the electronics robotics, and all the paperwork has been turned in. Yeah.
That's how you need to phrase it.
I know, I need to be smarter about it.
Makes it easier.
It does. It'll be at UNH again, so it's the first robotics competition on March 26th.
Move approval.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Outside projects, the metal fabrication will be building a sculpture for the city to be displayed at the Bradford Rail Trail. They started working on the project, there's no deadline for completion at this time, but it may be a project that we move on until the spring. There's been a request from City Hall to build a five-by-eight storage cabinet for the city clerk at City Hall, and our carpentry program will be doing that. And auto body, we'll be placing the doors on a truck for the water department, the water department service vehicle, through our auto body program. Those are some of our outside projects. Also, I received word from the MSBA that we did not get put into the pipeline for a building project for this school year. We plan on resubmitting our statement of interest over the next month, looking forward to, you know, the possible renovations of some of our building. As many of you know, our building is 45-plus years old at this point, and while it looks great, you get behind the walls a little bit, and we have some work to do. So we didn't get put in the pipeline this year, and I'm hoping that we'll submit again a statement of interest in maybe next year.
Mr. Early.
Was there any indication why, or did you ever talk to them after?
When they came and met, they didn't feel that there was a sense of urgency. There were other school districts that they felt were more urgent than.
I think that's a, that's great for the school, because, you know, we've kept it up pretty much, I mean, you know, you go to these other schools that are 10, 15 years old, they're all falling apart, and we're 45, 50 years, and we're in pretty good shape, so that, it's a big thing for the school.
Yeah, Harry and our maintenance department do a fantastic job, and we show well. So, thank you.
Did you mention there might be other schools in our district that are also doing projects?
I've heard of three other schools in our district that are in the pipeline to be doing, possibly doing projects, if they get them approved through their towns, yes.
Okay, thank you. Principals report. Mr. Agones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members, and Happy New Year. Just a few happenings before break, as you know, we had a holiday fund that was set up to assist some of Whittier's students and families having difficult financial times, and they raised over $8,000, pretty amazing. This was done through the help of many staff members and some local agencies, and I have to give props to the Haverhill Kiwanis, and as well as the United Way. Once again, I'd like to thank Cheryl Beegan, Elaine Kevkis, Terry Bragg, Christine Morrison, the guidance team, Charlie Early, and many other staff members who shopped, wrapped, delivered, and contributed to this fund. It was pretty amazing watching it. The students, as we speak, are preparing for our vocational midterms that are happening this week, that they're taking yesterday, the 12th and the 15th, and the academic exams midterms will be taken January 19th through the 22nd next week. During this time, the administrative staff, they work with freshmen on career plans, OSHA shop safety training, shop protocols, employability skills, peer mediation, class building, extracurricular activities, and they listen to a panel of non-traditional alumni panel that comes in, and they have guest presenters during that week for our freshmen. Pretty neat. We joke around, and I want to thank our vocational coordinator, Bev DeSavo, and she calls it her halftime show, and she does an amazing job coordinating this with all the freshmen, if you can imagine. And also, in the next couple months, if you can believe it, we'll be starting to look at and update the program of studies for next year. So things are flying, and everything's good so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the committee, Happy New Year to everybody. It's hard to believe, we are six months into the year, at least fiscally, we're into January, and I'm in my seventh month of the budget, and things are on track. And as is always at the January meeting, we have a variance report for the months that span July through December. And this year, on the variance report, I added a color, I added pink. And pink, in those lines where you see pink, those are salary lines that are presently in negative balances, but once you approve, hopefully, the transfer that's in your packet, they will be brought to zero in balance. And we always do this around mid-year, because you have staff changes who come in, and you don't know what the new people are going to be paid, you have people who leave, there's attrition, people go up in the columns over the summer, they cross lanes in the contract. So it's that type of thing that necessitates salary changes. Sometimes we budget one way and we classify another. For example, one of them is, last year we budgeted, I believe, in health occupations, but the person is actually working with the marketing staff. So I need to move the money to reflect where she actually is, that position was actually, it might have been office tech, I'm not sure, but it was actually a position that was going to be a shared position, and it ended up being more in one place than the other, so we might as well move the funding to where it is. So hopefully, the transfers will pass, and we will balance all the salary accounts mid-cycle. And I just wanted to point out that the health insurance negative balance continues to decrease, and the reason for that is we upfront a lot of the money over the summer when the teachers aren't working, and then we start to collect their withholdings, and so now it's starting to catch up with what we've paid out, so that will continue to decrease as the year goes on. Other than that, we're on track, and I would welcome any questions.
Ms. Troop.
Kara, the ones, the line items that are in pink that will be brought to zero, hopefully by the end of the evening, do those figures change again?
They shouldn't. Most of those shouldn't. Most of those are permanent people who either progressed longevity. A lot of what that is, is when you get your credits, we close the dates on when your credits can move you across the column in the salary contract. So I don't know how many people are going to progress when I'm doing a budget, so we basically move them forward.
Yeah.
We can move forward steps, but we don't know how many credits they're going to get. That's not going to change between now and the end of the year. What could change is if someone were out on a long-term illness, and we had to hire a long-term sub, we often charge it to the salary line item rather than the substitute line item, but that would be very specific, and you'd be able to see that. I don't expect this to change materially going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Mr. Wood, quick question. I saw the school attorney budget was over about 25.
That is pretty much a placeholder, there is also a line in green that should be there that says negotiator. We typically budget 10,000 in legal and 10,000 in negotiator. There's a twofold part here. We typically put in a placeholder for what we think we're going to owe at the end of the year, but also, we used to budget some of our attorney fees in the school choice account, and this year, some of these line items are over budget, because we have shifted out some of those expenses from the school choice account, anticipating that we're not going to have as many school choice funds. So that would be an example of, I'm paying it out of the district budget, it was oftentimes, if it went over the line item, it was in the choice budget. But there is a $10,000 balance in the negotiator account, that will offset it, and if we don't need all of that money at the end of the year, that encumbrance will be canceled.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, is if it was a normal occurrence, would it make sense to look at salaring, getting them to agree to a salary, versus doing an hourly?
A retainer, you mean?
Yeah, versus, I mean, I know when we switched over to paying a, in Haverhill, a flat fee per year, we probably saved a lot of money for the amount that we used the attorney.
The attorney was bid, the attorney contract was bid out, I believe, a couple of years ago, so this is a result of a bid.
Okay, okay, was just curious about that. Thank you.
Would you entertain?
Would you like a motion? Yes, Mr. Tucker.
I'd like to move that we authorize a line item transfer in the amount of $137,113 now, as outlined.
Second.
In the memo of January 4th.
We have a second?
Yes. Mr. Wood. All those in favor? All opposed? Mr. Early.
In other words, we're gonna be pretty much balanced after this meeting as well?
The salary accounts will, yeah, the salary accounts should be pretty much balanced. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
January agenda items, policy updates. Mr. Irving, do you want to do that now, or would you like to do it in a subcommittee?
We can do it in a subcommittee if you want, we are up to date, though.
Okay. The variance analysis, we just heard that, thank you. Budget review, we're all set with that, we just went over that earlier this evening. Superintendent update on goals, we had that also. We've had that also. February agenda items. The budget review. We're gonna... Doing that, and we have a meeting set up for that also. Subcommittee reports. Executive. We did meet earlier this evening. I don't think there's, we do have another meeting February 10th.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Instructional personnel.
Not met. We have not met.
Not met. Okay. Plant operations. Mr. Tucker?
Plant operations has not met.
Salary and negotiations. There's nothing going on with that right now. Policy, Mr. Irving.
Policy. We have the minutes for acceptance for December 9th. I move those for acceptance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we don't really have any policy updates at this point, I don't believe, and probably the next time will be this spring. They'll take a review again around April, May and check them out, see what comes in.
We did enough last meeting to...
I know. Enough from September on.
New business. Any new business? Anyone? No?
You have the minutes of executive subcommittee meeting of, oh, all right, that's the minutes. Okay.
Executive session. I don't believe there's a need for what's, for the executive session?
We don't need an executive session today.
We don't. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move a German.
Mr. Tucker? All in favor?
He just...